Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, may I have a roll call, Mr. Slaven, and then we have a bit of business we have to take care of?
Okay, present today is Chairman Whiteside, Select Board Member Ronald Bessie, myself, Alan Slaven, looks like Mr. Sullivan is here, and that's it.
Thank you. Absent is Mr. Bowen, who's been excused, as well as Mr. Chadwick and Ms. Wertz. Um, I need a motion to appoint, or yeah, elect a clerk pro tem, please. Can't hear you, Ron. Still can't hear you.
Not muted.
No, he's not muted. Maybe he's unplugged. Can't hear you.
I'll make a motion by necessity.
Thank you.
You have to second it, Julie. All right, Ron can put his hand up on the air.
All right.
Of it makes it easier.
Uh, Mr. Slaven, um, I seconded the motion. Is there any for the discussion? Hearing none. Um, I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Bessie, if you can say aye, certainly raise your hand. Thank you. We still can't hear you. And myself, it is aye. Mr. Um, Slaven will be the clerk pro tem. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Sullivan. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well, I'm sorry, guys. I've had a rough day and I've had a complete, was running late to the meeting, so.
That's okay. We, we were live without knowing we were live.
Yeah, so it's, uh, I did get here in time, though, contrary to what I thought, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, next on the agenda is residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items should be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than ten minutes total of resident comments per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment to anyone who, who chooses to address this board. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to address this board? Please raise your hand. I see none. We will move on to, um, announcements, Mr. Slaven.
Um, the only thing really is, uh, this past weekend, we had the Cape Verdean Festival downtown onset. Uh, I think it was a great success. There was really no issues whatsoever. Uh, everybody did a great job with it, the residents, the guests, et cetera. I think everybody had a really great time, a lot of families. Food, everything was really good. The only problem we had, which was expected, was traffic. Downtown onset village was, uh, completely locked up with traffic. And also going back and forth to the Cape, uh, the roads were backed up for miles, but except for those little inconveniences. It was really worthwhile having. It was good to see it back after three years of COVID stopping it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Mr. Bessie, um, have you gotten your audio back? And if so, do you have any announcements? I'll wait for you to reappear. Um, I have a couple of announcements. Um, on the nineteenth, from one to three in the afternoon at the Y Waltz Back to School Closet will be there. You can, you're able to pick up free backpacks, do free shopping for adult and children clothes. They're gently used. On the nineteenth, also in onset, the Chalk Full of Fun Festival at the, uh, Gregorman Band Shell from nine to four. Also this week, on the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, the library will hold its book sale. Um, the seventeenth is nine thirty to four thirty. Generally speaking, it opens at nine thirty and closes um, on, well, on Saturdays at one, but it's a great place to get your really good summer reading. Mr. Bessie, I'll go back to you, sir, if you have any announcements.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know what was going on.
That's okay.
No, I don't have any announcements tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are not going to. We're gonna do only six A and one appointment to the Housing Trust and then the Board of Registars. I have been asked by members of this board to hold off on new appointments until we have a full board. And unfortunately, this evening, we are only expecting the three individuals that you see here. So, Mr. Slaven may have an appointment. May I have the reappointment recommendation for Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee?
Okay, starting off with Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee. Make a motion to appoint George Barrett for reappointment for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Their second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint him. Um, unfortunately, this is one of those, it expired and we just didn't catch on, so. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is done. Next, Mr. Slaven.
Next, for the Affordable Housing Trust, make a motion to reappoint Patricia Wertz to a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Ms. Wertz. Um, she would be the Select Board Representative. Any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Please, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, three zero zero. We have, um, the Board of Registars that meet, that we must make these appointments tonight because the clerk is needing to train them for the upcoming elections. Mr. Slaven, I'll accept a motion on.
Okay, under the Republican, uh, Linda M. McKenzie. It's a reappointment for a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Linda McKenzie. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Slaven, there's a list of three individuals recommended by the Democratic Town Committee. You have the three names in front of you. Uh, do you have a recommendation or a, um, motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll get in trouble. Basically, uh, we have one appointment only. Three people were selected by the Democratic Party, you know, committee, and I would make a recommendation to, uh, basically appoint William Lockwood, uh, for a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Mr. Lockwood. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. It is done. Okay. Um, is the representative from Brews and Sips here? I was expecting Samantha Sapolos, but if you are here to speak about a one-day alcohol license for a wedding reception at the Box Mill, could you raise your hand, please? Okay. Um, I'll ask for a motion. All of the paperwork is in order on that. You have it all in your packet. There's tip certification, there's um, catering certification, and this is an individual who's done this repeatedly in other areas. So I would ask for a motion on seven A to grant Brews and Sips LLC a one-day liquor license.
Would you like me to formally do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, we've made a basically a motion to grant Brews and Clips LLC a one-day liquor license on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for a wedding reception to be held at the Box Mill Hall, one fifty Tohona Road, Wareham Mass. O two five seven one.
Second.
Second, um, you did say SIPS, C-I-P-S, not clips.
Oh, uh, then the, uh, printout that we have on the agenda is gonna scribble this error. I have C-I-P-S, unfortunately.
SIPS, that's correct. C-I-P-S, but you said clips, sir.
Well, you know, I don't see well.
Okay, that is your motion, though, is, is, uh, Brews and Sips?
Sure.
Okay, and that is your second, Mr. Bessie?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on that? Again, all of the paperwork is in order. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. It is granted, and she will be able to pick up the paperwork later on this week after you gentlemen sign the license. We have a seven fifteen hearing, and we cannot go to that hearing until seven fifteen. Item eight A, the discussion and possible vote regarding Select Board Liaisons will be put on the agenda of the twenty-ninth. The item eight B, to appoint a Select Board Member as a member of the Community Events Committee, which is also going to be moved to the, um, twenty-ninth. We will have a presentation on eight C. Um, I need a motion, please, on eight D, the curbside billing, opt-out and reduction fees. Mr. Slaven?
Make a motion to vote to approve the opt-out and reduction fees application for curbside billing to ski at twenty-four in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the opt-out and reduction fees. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, I need a motion on item eight E. We previously voted to change the number of the Council on Aging Board Members from nine to seven. That reduction has to go before the town meeting, and so we need to rescind the vote that we took.
Make a motion that we rescind our vote on the Council on Aging Board Members that we went from nine to seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to rescind that vote. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We do have, um, a presentation by Mr. Scully, who is here, and, um, uh, let's see, uh, let's go to the, um, approval of the minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, please.
Do you want to do eight F? It won't take very long.
Oh, yeah, do you have, yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, eight F, uh, the Cannabis Control Commission, excuse me, came up with a whole set of, uh, new regulations, uh, which they constantly are playing around with. The commission's kind of in a disorganized state, is the best way to put it. Uh, they now have the ability to review every host agreement. And if they feel like they can basically cancel any host agreement that any municipality has with a cannabis-based, uh, business, uh, it puts in jeopardy our impact fees, et cetera. Uh, it's, it, they don't do anything as far as at the state level. The state still gets their ten point seven percent or whatever. But the, the cities and towns, uh, couldn't easily lose their impact fees. Uh, every host agreement going forward has to be go through them, et cetera. They're asking right now for input from the municipalities. Uh, I would ask that we write a letter and probably also sit down with Mr. Sullivan to have his input in the letter as saying that we are extremely concerned about the loss of impact fees, et cetera.
Um, yeah, I agree with that. Is that your motion, Mr. Slaven, to authorize the chair and to have the chair discuss with Mr. Sullivan and possibly Mr. Foster the impact of the reduction in impact fees?
I'd like to add one more piece to it. They would like to see our three percent raised to six percent.
You want that as part of the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, is that, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion on the motion to authorize the chair to write the letter after discussion with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Foster, and to include the recommendation that we want a six percent fee as opposed to the three? Hearing no further discussion, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Um, Mr. Sullivan, if I can meet with you sometime in the next day or two, I'd like to draft that before you go off in the sunset. Um, Mr. Boyington, would you raise your hand? And if somebody is here with you, um, have them raise their hand as well. Mr. Boyington is here for seven A, the, or seven B, a hearing at seven fifteen, so Mr. Slaven, I'm gonna ask you to wait one more minute, and then I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the hearing.
Would you like a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes. Yes, I would.
I just did that.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes. Any further discussion on those, that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Sol, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, Mr. Slaven Sullivan says yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Well, okay, Mr. Slaven, I'll accept a motion to open the hearing.
Make a motion. Make a, make a motion to open the hearing, which is scheduled for seven fifteen P M for the transfer of common vics, all alcoholic beverage license from Stevie B's Inc., doing business as onset sport resort to Bebo's Sports Grill LLC, doing business as Bebo's Sports Grill, two seventy onset Ave, Wareham, O two five three eight, under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is opened. Mr. Boyington, would you introduce yourself, sir, and give us a brief outline of what it is that you would like to do, um, in this new location for yourself?
Yes, hello, my name is, uh, Brent Boyington. I am a resident of Carver and a resident of the South Shore for a very long time. Um, I've been looking around for the last few years for a location for a restaurant with a bar in it, which would be a casual environment. It would also be approximately sixty seating. Um, what I'm hoping to do is have a community-based place where people can come and socialize and get out and also enjoy some sports and recreation. So, we're gonna have the sports theme, and we're gonna keep it very simple. We're gonna have soup, salad, we're gonna have appetizers, we're gonna have burgers, chicken, wings, you know, and, um, a variety of different foods. My hope is that we're an integral part of the community and that people will enjoy coming here and seeing each other face-to-face and having an evening out or a day out, um, where they can meet with each other.
Thank you. Um, either of you, Mr. Bessie or Mr. You have, Mr. Bessie, questions, sir?
Uh, yeah, so I, I just, um, I'm just, I'm just curious, what, uh, what is your, um, I can't, I just, what is your background in, uh, in restaurants, bars, alcohol, things like that?
Yep. So my formal training is as a BSBA in a finance with accounting and business management. I spent thirty years in corporate environments, some of them restaurant-based backgrounds like McDonald's Corporation, but a lot of it media as well. I also have been an owner with partners in a restaurant out in the Berkshires called Lakeside Bar and Grill. And as a young person and going through college, I worked at multiple restaurants in multiple positions, anywhere from cook to prep cook to dishwasher, to waiter, to waitress. Um, I also was on in part of the partnership and ownership of the Lakeside Bar and Grill in Lanesboro. This current venture I'm doing by myself because I would rather, um, kind of have it for myself and have a smaller, you know, venue and a more focused venue on the community and, you know, have it be a sole proprietor type environment. Are there any other questions?
Um, so, you know, obviously, there's a, it's a, you know, it's a huge responsibility, um, when it comes to not, you know, not just owning a restaurant, but when you start to deal with, um, alcohol and, and, and things like that. Um, you know, entertainment, um, all those, I think we're gonna discuss that in a little bit. Um, but, you know, my biggest concern with, with anything is anybody coming into town, um, just making sure that they are ready for the ride that they're gonna take, um, with the ups and the downs and the learning curves and um, just making it a, a great place, but also a safe place to be. Um, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, from a, from a background standpoint, you're, you're ready to, um, abide and, and do the things that you can to build what you'd like to have, but doing it in a way where it, uh, you know, conforms to all the laws, both, uh, locally and at the state level. So, uh, if you're ready for it, I'm excited to see that place, uh, you know, back up and running again. Uh, it was a staple in that community for a very long time, uh, and we'd really like to see it, uh, active, uh, once again and, um, you know, would look forward to, uh, you know, patronizing and, and seeing what you bring to the table.
That was a good pun. Mr. Boyington, perhaps, I met you yesterday and you gave me really some really in- interesting information about how you've already met with the neighbors, you've already met with certain people, um, you know, the fire, um, department, the onset fire department, and some of the other things that you've talked about in terms of parking, because parking on onset avenue might be a problem. Could you address those things so that we, so that everyone knows what I learned from you yesterday?
Yep. So to kind of start with, uh, Mr. Bass, I've always held positions of responsibility, and even in the prior restaurant that had an alcohol and a lottery license, I was always in the forefront of being responsible and meeting with the community and meeting with the neighbors. Stevie B has been a great person, has introduced me to the neighbors on both my left and my right. Um, and I've met them in person, I've given them my personal number, and I wanna be a part of the community, and I want the community to be able to interact with me and, you know, let me know that I am being a good person and a good part of the community. I've also reached out to the Wareham Police Department, and although they can officially not go through anything, I introduced myself to them. I've been in the town hall and I've met with the various departments, including the, um, the Board of Health Department, I've spoken on the phone with the onset fire department, and I just wanna make sure we're doing everything we can and getting every permit and every license we can and making sure the building is up to specifications. And really, I want this to be a community place, and I want to be part of the community and a responsible citizen within the community. And I plan on meeting with, you know, all of the different members of the town whenever they would like.
Do you have a, um, fire suppression system in the building?
Yes, I have a fire suppression, a sprinkler system, a fire alarm system, and a hood suppression system. And this week, they're actually coming in to do the evaluations on them before the fire department comes in to make sure they're all up to specs. Now, I'll have the latest, what they need for the alarm system, the sprinkler system, and the suppression system.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, any more questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Slaven?
Really don't have any questions. Uh, I've kept after this, as we know, we, uh, gave Mr. Blanger an extension to hold the license until he decided what he was gonna do with the property and stuff. And every couple of months, I'd check in to see what was happening, where he was at. Uh, it's really interesting that he's had more than a few offers, you know, to lease the property, et cetera. Uh, he made it very clear that he wanted to find someone that would be good for the community. And he didn't pick someone who offered him the most money or anything else. He actually came up and decided who was best for the town of Wareham, which is not usual these days, you know, it's usually all dollar-based, and I have a lot of confidence because he also has property in Wareham and he is concerned for the town. And, uh, he highly recommended Mr. Boyington, so I'm very happy what's happening.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application. Please raise your hand. I see none. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this application? Please raise your hand. And again, I see none. Do you have anything else that you would like to address us with, Mr. Boyington? Mr. Boyington, do you have anything else you'd like to address to us?
Uh, all I would like to say is it was important to me, wherever I was going to operate the business, it'd be within ten miles of my home, which this is. I'm going to be here every day, and I want to be an active member of the community. And I spent time, uh, at the Cape Verdean Festival this weekend as well, meeting more members of the community. So I look forward to be, being part of this community and providing a positive part of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing, sir.
Motion so made to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, the hearing is now closed. I will accept a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the transfer of of the, uh, common viculus all alcoholic beverage license from Stevie B's Inc., doing business as onset sports resort to Bebo's Sports Grill LLC. Excuse me, doing business as Bebo's Sports Grill, two seventy onset Ave, Wareham Mass. O two five three eight, under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? I will note for the record that every piece of paper that is required, except for the sign-off on the inspections, has been provided. And Mr. Boyington has assured us that before he asks to pick up the license, that someone in the building will have a tips certification. He understands that requirement as well. Although, uh, Mr. Roll Call Vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The, it is granted, sir. And you know the, um, amount of other things that you have to, okay. Uh, Mr. Slaven, we, I would accept a motion on a possible entertainment license, sir.
Okay, uh, basically, we were going to look at possible vote to grant Bevo's Sports Grill, two seventy onset Ave, Wareham Mass, O two five three, an entertainment license from the hours of one P M to one A M, Monday through Saturday, and from one P M to twelve A M on Sundays.
There's a second to that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, Mr. Boyington, you had indicated what kind of entertainment you would be providing. Could you please, um, address us, let the other members of this board know exactly what kind of entertainment you have planned?
Yep, we'll start with the basic. We're gonna have, uh, two pool tables in here. We're also gonna have, um, a jukebox as well. We do have a DJ booth in here, and for the entertainment, the live entertainment portion, the weekdays, for the most part, we will not be having live entertainment. It will be mostly Friday and Saturday evenings. And we're looking at three-hour things from six to nine, seven to ten, or eight to eleven, for the most part. Sundays, we're only gonna be doing live entertainment in the afternoon and early evenings outside of football season, which will be mostly February to August, and in football season, we'll be focused on the football itself. We'll also have a karaoke night, a trivia night, and some other nights for the community that most likely will run six to nine or seven to ten, depending on what the community participates in, in things like that. So that was kind of the plan I had outlined and I had sent to the Select Board as well. So that's the intention.
Thank you.
And, and also, the music is mostly gonna be acoustic music. It will be small groups, maybe one amp or small electrical, but we're not expecting to do anything grand or anything large. Um, mostly just, you know, solo acts, acoustical, some trios, things like that.
Okay, in, this board has had many complaints about, um, other locations in town not being respectful of their neighbors in terms of noise. Um, and you had provided two pages of information. It's actually in the packet about really what time you would like to be open, because I'm guessing that we may have a little bit of issue with one P M to twelve A M on Sundays. And I'm pretty sure we're gonna have one, an issue with the one P M to one A M, Monday through Saturday. Although in your discussion with us, you just said that it would be Monday through Thursday, and then then Saturday would be a different timeframe. Am I right?
Yes, I put the parameters in there to be as open as possible, to have opportunities to do different things within the community. Having said that, you know, the anticipation of being open till one A M is based on the fact that late football games, late baseball games, Monday Night Football tend to wrap up around midnight um, or twelve thirty. It's not with the intent that I would be having live music or live acts at the, at the place at that hour. The live music in my, in my, um, is going to be ending at eleven P M. You know, the entertainment license, I just wanted to make sure that we could still utilize the pool tables. We could still utilize the, um, the jukeboxes until twelve or twelve thirty, um, so that we could then wrap down.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven or Mr. Bessie? Do you have, yes, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, I would suggest you, when you have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Belanger, uh, in the area where, where you're in, sound travels a lot more than people realize. Uh, and Mr. Belanger did have a few times where he had some issues with neighbors across the street and down one of the side streets, which you think about it, it can't be, but it does. Uh, are you going to do anything outside the patio area as far as entertainment?
No, my expectation is not to do any, anything in the patio area other than have tables, have the beverages and the food out in that area. I'll have some TVs that will point out into that area in case people wanna watch football out there. But I, my intention is not to have live acts out on the patio area.
Yeah, I would definitely, I would definitely recommend not having any out there, simply because the sound will travel from there quite a distance.
Yeah, he stated that he's not going to have it there.
I understand. I just want to reinforce. Thank you.
Mr. Bessie?
Um, yeah, so I, I, I'm just looking through the paperwork again. Um, I would, I would make a recommendation that under the other entertainment, um, that you would, uh, have TVs, um, on there as, uh, something that is going to be, um, being used, cause you specifically mentioned football, um, just as a, just as a way to cover all of the bases. Um, and knowing that it, you know, it's covered under the license, but just so that there's no questions. Down the road about, is it allowed, is it not allowed? Um, because it's not currently on the application, and maybe that's something that can be updated in the future. Um, to cover it, but I would think just for um transparency sake, um, that we add TVs. To the application, other other entertainment.
Do you have any problem with that, Mister Boynton?
I do not.
Okay, we'll add it to the application. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant the entertainment license? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven.
You want me to make a motion, or you also?
Oh, no, go ahead, make the motion, please.
Thank you. Make a motion that we grant to Bebo's Sports Grill, two seventy Onset Ave, Wareham, Mass. Oh two five three eight, an entertainment license. From the hours of one P M. to one A M. Monday through Saturday, and from one P M. to twelve A M. On Sundays.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, is there any further discussion on that motion? And um you are on record, Mister Boynton, with your intentions and um. If we were to receive any complaints, we would come back to you and ask you to reconsider um. Thank you. Uh, go for a roll call vote, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much, Mister Boynton, and thank you very much for choosing to do business in Wareham, we very much appreciate that.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to uh get going, thank you.
All right, thank you, good night.
Good night.
Um, Mister Scully, would you raise your hand, please? Mister Scully is going to be doing a presentation regarding Complete Streets. Noah, would you let Mister Scully in, please? Mister Scully will be screen sharing, he also sent us a copy of the presentation. Um, if he has issues. Good evening, Mister Scully, you're muted at the moment, but when you are no longer muted, would you introduce yourself, please? Excellent.
Yes, all right, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, excellent, uh, good evening, everyone, uh. Members of the board, um. Uh, Madam Chairperson and and anyone else who is watching and listening. Um, my name is Bill Scully. I am a transportation engineer and planner with Kimley Horn and Associates. And we've been uh working with the town um through the planning department. Um, but also uh coordinating with other departments. Uh, related to Complete Streets is one of the things we're working on with the town. And um, we started the project probably um. Right around the first of the year, I believe, uh, the grant came in in the uh fall, the late fall and. Getting underway during the winter. And we've been progressing through the uh, the Mast dot Complete Streets program um. Uh, related to this subject and uh. So, uh, tonight, what I uh wanted to do was give a, uh, I'll try to be very quick, just. Keep weaving me on, uh, cause I love talking about this stuff. Um, a a brief overview of Complete Streets, the Mast dot Program, and then talk about the Complete Streets Policy. Um, as part of that program and why that's important uh to move forward with. Um, so let's see, how do you, I guess, I do share screen. Alright. And let's see. Do you see um slides by any chance?
No.
Alright. Now?
No.
Oh, I wonder if I uh.
Mister Sullivan, I did send it to B O S, do, are you able to access it, sir?
Give me a few minutes, I'll see what I can do.
Yeah.
Let me see if, uh, maybe I uh hit the button wrong and. Oh, here we go.
Oh, you got it, okay.
I think.
You got it.
Alright, you know, this technology stuff. So, alright, so let me uh get this going. Hopefully, you know, full screen. Okay, so uh, again, tonight is a Complete Streets Policy and the Mast dot Program. Um. I'm gonna cover these three topics tonight fairly quickly, but feel free to stop me as we go and. I can uh answer any questions, so complete streets, uh, what are they? Well, they're intended for us to look at. Not, not the, just the pavement area of the street, but the whole right of way, the street layout. Um, and and try to make them. Good for everyone, safe for everyone, all abilities. Could be children, could be um people with disability, um, uh, seniors. Uh, provide safe choices for anything as simple as walking along the sidewalk, as well as uh crossing a street. And provide connectivity um to uh. To between key destinations. Um. So these are just some uh uh shots of elements that. Can be considered as part of Complete Streets, not necessarily everything has to be done. Um, you don't need all these elements uh in a right of way to make it a complete street. Um, a- as we go through this presentation, I really want you to think about Complete Streets as more of a mindset. Uh, set of principles, uh, really to to address those abilities and the ages and the safety. But uh, but these types of things become part of that Complete Streets, like um rapid flash beacons for enhanced pedestrian crossings. Bike racks, uh, transit stops that have a shelter, maybe a light. Maybe the schedule in the map of the, of the transit route, um, speed feedback signs to. Try to actively um uh reduce and manage travel speeds. Along streetways, on the picture on the right is an extended curb. So if you have a very wide street, you could extend the curb to try to reduce the uh length of the street crossing. Uh, a pedestrian may have to go. On the bottom, in the bottom middle is what we call a parklet. So some communities are doing things like this that. Again, they're making a, a place for people to be, let's say, in Wareham Center or. Or Onset Village, where uh maybe there's not a, a lot of room on the sidewalk, you take. One of the parking spaces and you create a, a pleasant sitting area. Um, and and just added amenity to, to encourage people to be there and. Um, socialize and and enjoy the area. So what they're not, and these are just a couple of shots, but the more and more I get into this and and you'll probably start noticing this as well now. Um, on the bottom left, um, very common where on one side of the street, you might have a. A ramp that lets people come down on, on a wheelchair or strollers into the crosswalk to get across the street. In the face with a vertical curb, you can't get back up onto the other side. Uh, middle, very wide area, a lot of volume, uh unprotected, undefined. Pedestrian crossing, not a safe environment. On the bottom right, sometimes we start out with a plan to. Get a sidewalk going, or you make someone start a sidewalk, and it doesn't. Get completed, there's lack of connectivity and basically a, a dead end on a sidewalk. So those are some of the things that either are or aren't. Elements of a complete street, but but overall, the, the purpose is really to provide safe movement for all users, all modes. Create a more comfortable environment for the community. Encourage improved health outcomes, it gets us more active. It certainly gets me active, I've been in environments even where I live, where sidewalks weren't there. And then they are there, and I feel more apt to, okay, I'm gonna take a walk. Um, and enhance vitality and viability of the business districts and villages. Um, provide choices of travel, you don't have to walk everywhere, you don't have to walk between point A and B five days a week. But if it's safe choices there, one day a week, you could say, you know, I'm walking to the library, I'm not gonna drive. So that, those are kinds of things to, you know, it gets us uh thinking along those lines. So the Mast dot Complete Streets Program, it was initiated in twenty sixteen. It's both financial um assistance program as well as. Really that incentive to make things safer and more comfortable and accommodate. Um, it, it grew out of a little bit of uh the twenty fourteen healthy transportation policy that was. Put in place uh by the governor at that time. And then the Department of Health and Department of Transportation had to work together uh based on legislation to create this program. Um, it encourages municipalities to adopt strategic and a comprehensive approach to complete streets and really. Create that, like a policy would be, that mindset to be having it on your mind and thinking about it. Uh, all the time. And as, as I said, it does provide for funding. As of the other night, uh, two hundred eighty-nine out of three hundred fifty-one communities were registered in the program. Um, approved policies were two hundred fifty-eight of those two eighty-nine. And then two hundred thirty-eight have approved prioritization plans. So the colors on the map, uh, nothing major, but the orange. Indicate communities across the state that have gone through the policy, developed the plan. And then received grant money to implement something. Could have been repair a sidewalk, could have been put handicap ramps in. Could have been uh those rapid flash beacons and speed feedback signs, bike racks and all that. Um. Letter of intent, there's two uh communities, Wareham is one of those, so Wareham registered. Put a letter of intent into the D O T to um. That we int- we want to participate in the program, we intend to develop a policy and want to put a plan together. Um, the plan, eh, we've been working on the plan since early in the year, and it, it really is set to go. Except it can't be uploaded to D O T unless the policy is uh complete. The approved projects, you can see, uh, they do two awards a year. In the awards each year, uh, approximate about ten million dollars. Um, they've been trying to uh spread the wealth across the state and encourage. Uh, all the different communities to uh participate. Uh, the three tiers in the program are tier one is a policy, tier two plan, and tier three implementation. Um, policy, the D, the one thing D O T probably does a little bit more than. Then uh on some of the other elements of the program is, they will review the policy and they score it. And you have to get an eighty or higher, or they send it back and with some suggestions on getting it better. Uh, the policies I've worked on has never had a problem getting about ninety-five to a hundred and five. Um. When, um, so then you go through the policy and the plan. Uh, then makes you eligible to apply for tier three um implementation or construction grant money. And you need to have both the first two uploaded and accepted before um you apply for tier three. Tier three, um, I, I should mention, it, right now, the program. Um. Provides for up to five hundred thousand dollars per community over a three to four fiscal year period. And you don't have to ask for all five hundred thousand at once. You can choose projects on your plan that total two hundred thousand one time, get that done and then go in for another. Uh, three hundred thousand. Some communities have uh gotten multiple awards, oh, since the program started, since it's been uh. In place, they've been awarding constructions since seventeen. These are all the types of uh actions that are eligible, um. There's a, a lot of them, uh, many of them are low cost. Many of them don't re- uh require significant engineering costs. Complete Streets Program does not cover engineering costs or permitting costs or right of way costs. Most of the, well, all the plans that I have prepared and worked with communities on, we've. We've uh identified actions all within the public right of way, so right of way does not become an issue. Most do not need any permitting, environmental permitting, um, some do need engineering, so it really depends on what the. Um, what the project is that you go to pursue. Um, we did a, a recently a four hundred foot long new sidewalk in Sherborne. On new land, so that needed a little bit of engineering uh to do that. But some things like uh enhanced pedestrian crossings or signage, things like that, need minimal. Uh, engineering uh to go uh to get put in. One of the uh things that they've updated in the last few years is allow for environmental and streetscape investments such as street lighting. Uh, wayfinding, uh, s- street trees. As they relate to the Complete Streets Project. Or or Complete Streets principles. Again, these are just some pictures of some projects, uh, top left is a shared use path in Yarmouth. Um, second one to the, on the top is a, another parklet that was up in North Adams that they put out there. Um, next one is a bus, bus stop with lighting and uh. Uh, bike racks right next to it, up in Amherst. And then you can see there's either buffered bike, bike lane or pedestrian crossing, speed feedback. Or a different kind of a crosswalk uh down on the bottom left. These are just examples, um, there's a lot of flexibility in, in choosing them. So, uh, Complete Streets Policy, so I, I think I've sort of said this in a, uh, the first few minutes. It changes our practice, it changes our thought process, and it, it gets us thinking as we're, as we're doing anything, if we're doing a. Uh, rehabilitation of a street or resurfacing of a street. You might start to think and go, boy, can we strike that street a little differently than we've been doing? So you, you haven't had to, in that example. No real construction, you were gonna resurface the street anyways, and maybe you strike. More narrow lanes and, and leave more room on the side uh. For either a wider shoulder, or maybe you can even fit in a buffered bike lane, a little bit like you've done on Onset Ave. Um, although, you know, we like to modify the markings over there, but that's. A very wide road and you've done some modification there to make biking as well as uh traveling a little safer. Um, again, and ensure the entire right of way, so usually the right of way. In downtown was gonna be building face to building face, back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk. In another area, you might have uh ten or fifteen feet off the sidewalk. Will be a right of way, so there may be opportunities within that right of way to do things. Nothing says you have to do, you know, you fix a road up. You don't have to put in a bike lane, or have to put in sidewalks on both sides, but. Thinking about it and considering it, and can we do it, is it easy, hard, what, what's the, what's the uh. You know, uh, constraints, so you can think of all that. But importantly, you can gradually over time, as you think that way, then gradually over time, you're gonna start to improve that. Uh, accommodation and, and you make the community a little bit more complete in terms of transportation. Again, the example of resurfacing a street, you might go down there and you go, well, there's, you know, five handicap ramps along that street that. Aren't ADA compliant, why don't we take care of them while we're resurfacing the school? So, um, and again, because of this program, it cert- it makes the town eligible for funding grants. And right now, town of Wareham would be uh sitting pretty good in terms of being able to secure the. The first five hundred thousand dollars for the grant, because it has not been awarded anything at this point. So the major components of the policy, um. Uh, I believe all of you got a copy, so there's a vision and purpose in there, why are we doing it, what do we hope? We hope to make it safe, we hope to accommodate all users. Um, we make a core commitment to keep that in mind. Exceptions on, no, let's see, I'm, I got these summarized right here. So the vision and purpose, again, outlines the vision of the how and why, and we move towards safer, better, connected transportation network. Um, core commitments, the project designs consider almost, doesn't say you have to do them all. But at least give some thought as you start to make some improvements to your system. Um, use some design principles and actions that can be implemented um over time, I showed you a lot of little things. They can be incremental, incrementally added along your network to make things uh better and uh safe. And the policy also applies not only to town projects, but state projects and also private developments, so once you adopt the policy. You know, um, uh, the state comes in and wants to do something, not that they're not pushing these kinds of things now, but. The town can say, hey, look, we have a complete streets policy and, and a bike connection or. Something at wider sidewalks are important to us, and try to work with them to have them do that on their project. Uh, private developments, as they're going through the planning board and zoning board for approvals. Once this policy is in, very fair to have the board say, well, how are you, demonstrate how. You're gonna be compliant with our Complete Streets Policy. It might be a. It might be something as simple as make sure there's a walkway connection from your door out to the sidewalk that we have on our street. Um, or it could be add some bike racks. It it doesn't have to be expensive and extensive, it just, you wanna get everyone on the same page. There are exceptions, so if, you know, right-of-way acquisition might prevent something. Um, the cost of that might prevent something. Um, DPW doing maintenance, normal maintenance, uh tearing up a road to put a new water line in. Um, doesn't mean they have to put the street back and it has to be a complete street. So there are elements in the policy that, one of the fears, I think, when this whole program began in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, um, a lot of the Massachusetts DPW directors were concerned that boy, this is opening up a hornet's nest, every time I go out there and fix up something, I'm gonna have to add a sidewalk, and that's not true. Um, and it's been, as as you can see, there's so many communities across the state doing it, working on this program now that uh um it's in my mind, um and I've been involved since twenty sixteen, it's one of the better programs the state actually created. Um, I wish they gave more money to it, but at least they've been regularly funding it every uh every couple of years when the bond bill passes. Implementation, um so what the pol- what's in the policy, um and it does leave the board of Selectman uh, or so I should say Select Board, um flexibility. Um, but typically what towns do is a du- is designate a committee that that is there, could be department heads. Um, but periodically, once a year, twice a year, they may get together and say, all right, how we've been doing, we've got, we've got our complete streets plan, it has forty different actions on it. Um, we, we have a chance to go for more grant money, can we move ahead? And and do something. Or four years down the road, you might end up saying, well, we've implemented eight out of our forty, and there's a couple of new things we'd like to do. You can change your plan. It's your plan, it's the town's plan. Um, the state, after five years of the plan, they did go out to the communities and say, hey, you have a chance to update your plan. We we you, you've been involved in it, you've done some things, you know, but they they didn't come back and say you had to. The only caveat on it is they didn't fund the updates of the plans. They'll keep funding the implementation actions, but um not the updates. Um, and uh the last slide really is uh this, I just wanted to give you a little bit of highlight on the, on the Complete Streets Plan that we've been working on. So right now, there's thirty-seven distinct projects listed on the plan with a hundred elements or more of actions, meaning we might say put speed feedback signs in for our speed management purposes on this street, this street, this street. It might be listed as a project, but there's six speed feedback signs going. Um, so that's what changes from the projects to the elements. Um, it includes a hundred, hundred and two new or reconstructed curb ramps to be ADA compliant. Um, as I said, a lot of complete streets is low cost, but there's low cost and high cost actions. There's quick turnaround, there's longer term uh projects, some of them would require some engineer. Um, pedestrian improvements, uh there's uh more than six thousand feet of uh sidewalk, either repair or new construction um on several streets. As I mentioned, there's like twelve feedback display signs uh that are in the plan. And there's also uh an onset app, listed onset app is with some short-term and long-term projects, and this is just a smattering, so I just, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a highlight of what we've been doing since the beginning of the year. Um, this is the last slide, so upload the policy if adopted um by the end of the month of September first. Um, once that's up and accepted, then they will free up the computer portal to the Complete Streets site so that the tier-two plan can be uploaded. And I put no later than December first, it could be uploaded October first, October fifteenth. It it's, as long as it's filed uh in this fall, uh we'll be fine. And then um, and then the next round for submitting a grant application for the implementation would be May first to uh twenty twenty-four. Um, there is an application uh date of October first, but the town wouldn't be ready for that because of the policy and the plan uploads or would would conflict with that date. So the town would be ready though by May first, and based on my experience, um I I think that the town, as I said, probably stands a great chance, I won't guarantee a hundred percent, but ninety-nine percent chance of being awarded uh for whatever amounts that they uh put in for. And you would know that right around the fiscal year, July first or thereabouts. And then you would have time to work on implementation, a year, a year or so within that time. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you, um, Mr. Slaven or Mr. Bessie, questions?
Um, I thought that we had the Complete Streets uh project that Canada put in a while ago that we had actually done. Um, just for background information, Serpent Office Technical Assistance and does uh many projects for municipalities with Complete Streets as well. So even though we're using an outside consultant, uh we do have the availability of uh forty hours the, a year between planning and the Selectman, you know, for these different areas as well, so just so you know.
I I would like to, I I should mention, um, so in our working group meetings with uh that we had going on while we were developing the tier-two plan, uh we had Lisa and Jackie from Serpent sit in on our uh meetings and participate and provide input. Yep, they're available to hire as well.
Okay. Mr. Bessie, any questions or comments? You're shaking your head.
No, I'm, no, I'm good.
Okay, so um just to summarize, Mr. Scully, this this project has been, the, working on this policy has been in the works for a while through the town, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and you've met with different um department heads, and you certainly have worked with the, with municipal maintenance and Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Buckland.
That's correct.
Okay.
And uh we went, uh so in our working group, we had planning, uh maintenance facilities, uh police, fire, uh Conservation Commission. Um, Derek sat in on uh one of our meetings and went over the details. Um, and we made some modifications, I think I made a presentation to the road commissioners.
Okay, great. Um, Mr. Sullivan, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, if we have no further questions or comments, then I would accept a motion, Mr. Slaven, to adopt the policy as modified, the Complete Streets policy as presented.
Uh, no, this policy is not completed yet, is it?
Mr. Scully.
The policy is draft completed, um, ready for signature.
Right, it is ready.
Yep.
Okay, we have that in front of us now.
I emailed down uh um last week, and I think uh we had a copy down there a few months ago as well.
Mr. Buckland has it.
My only question would be, we only have three members here. Are you comfortable with three members going ahead and approving it?
I am. Mr. Bessie?
I mean, I don't, I don't see an op- uh, I don't see an issue with, you know, as long as we have the the three, which would make it, you know, binding. Um, but I mean, I could see the other side too, if you wanted to have them at least review it and maybe um vote on it in the next meeting, I mean, I can do it either way, it's whatever.
Um, I think we need to move on it because we have a September first deadline, and our next meeting is Au- is August twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And this has been, has been vetted by several of our different boards and committees.
Okay, well, I just made a motion to go ahead and approve.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve the policy, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Scully, whose signature does it require, Mr. Buckland?
Um, it's in, no, it's the boards.
Okay, so um could you make sure that we have that? I don't think that was part of the presentation.
I will, um, I'll get, I'll take the draft stamp off and get that down to Derek tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Su- Mr. Scully, good evening. Okay, we'll go back to the Town Administrator's Report, I guess.
Uh, forty and now it's first, Judy.
Oh, is there any forty-eight hour business?
I don't know.
Okay.
Now you can go ahead.
Mr. Scully, you have to take your screen sharing off, I guess.
Probably, here we go.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Oh. Yeah, yeah, I stopped, uh, it allowed me to uh stop his sharing when I put this on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so what we have is, I'm sure you've seen it on social media, it's been sent out there, but uh putting a little more information, this is for um what we're presumptively calling the First Annual Main Street Back-to-School Stroll. So it's about getting our kids ready for school. And we're giving students a chance to pick up free elementary and middle school supplies. We have pens, pencils, erasers, notebooks, um some different colored earbuds. Uh, you know, we we were running the gamut, we took the uh elementary and middle school lists. We even have little um little Kleenexes for them, because I know that won't be too fun for the kids, but as a parent, we run through those a lot, sending them to school. Uh, so the thought process behind this was uh to get something uh done downtown, let the kids and their families know that uh the community's thinking about them, reminding them that they're a part of Wareham uh community as a whole, so starting off at the old train station, also known as the Comfort Station, which is behind uh El Mariachi that uh that alleyway that's been shut down to traffic. Uh, the kids will be given a tote bag, and uh it's a, it's a nice little one with the Wareham Town Seal on it. And uh they'll be going along these stops, and basically, it's almost like a trick-or-treating for school supplies. Got about seven area businesses and um Wareham Fire that's that's involved in this. And uh really excited about it, so what we're asking is people show up on uh August twentieth, so this Sunday, from two to five P M. Please start at the Comfort Station, AKA the old train station, where you'll be given the bag, some supplies. And there might actually be a uh special uh special coupon for a free sweet treat that uh that day, should be a beautiful day, so I'm sure it'll be welcome. Um, so I'm excited, um Selectman Chadwick has been uh helping us on this. And uh if you've come by my office lately, you'll see there's uh, there's supplies almost to the ceiling, so we're really excited about this, and uh, you know, any outcome will be great, this being the inaugural year. And we hope this is something that will grow and continue on, and uh you know, uh our merchants are are helping out, we really appreciate it. So when you get there on the uh, on the twentieth, you'll be given a little list of the businesses. And we're keeping everything on that side of Main Street, so we're not worried about tra- ca- uh crossing the road. And uh hope it's a great day for everyone involved.
Great idea, Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
Well, thank you, and that's been the main one, um. So I will stop this in a second once the report's done. I do just wanna highlight something you said earlier about uh me going off into the sunset. Some people might have cheered, I'm I'm not leaving for good. I'm just, I'm going on vacation for a week. And it's uh, we always call it more of a trip, good, we're visiting our in-laws, my in-laws. Uh, I'll be out of uh town, so Miss Allen England will be in uh with the Assistant Town Administrator will be um the one that's heading up operations while I'm out of town. And anything you need, please reach out to her, so it's um I'm I'm not going so far that you can't reach me either in an emergency, but she's more than capable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, that's it?
Yeah.
Awesome. Um, liaison initiative reports, Mr. Slaven?
Okay, uh, information came down today, one of my transportation meetings. Uh, GATRA has been given an increase in funding by the state this year over and above the normal. Uh, so sometime in October, uh they will start to implement Sunday bus service for all their communities. So that's something that's been not available for quite a while, and that should help our residents moving around. Especially when we get into the uh new MBTA train station in Middleborough, hopefully, starting up sometime this fall as well. So we should be able to make it easy to get up and down to that particular train station. Um, the other thing is myself and Mrs. Whiteside have been discussing for a while, bringing back the Veterans Day Parade to the town of Wareham. I think it's a sorely missling, uh the veterans deserve the recognition, et cetera. So we are planning to do a Veterans Day Parade on November eleventh twenty twenty-three, and we'll be uh looking for people to step up that wanna do floats, wanna march to the parade, wanna help and assist. Uh, it'll be the same as usual, the parade's start at nine o'clock. We end up at the Memorial Town Hall. Uh, there'll be either the Multi-Service Center will provide food for the veterans. We're also looking at a couple potential restaurants that may wanna do it instead, we'll see how it all goes. We've got a bunch of logistics we have to take care of, and that's enough for me today.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie.
Uh, no, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Slaven has said, it's, I think, extremely important that we honor our veterans on Veterans Day, um, and know that that's one of my things, uh we have a small group, uh we do meet weekly um to go over what we need to accomplish, and we will have some kind of um information posted on the town website so that people who want to uh sign up and run a float or march or, you know, whatever. We will be working on that so that we are able to do that. We have a a nice committee of people, um including Sharon Boyer, who has run these parades in the past, so we're, we've got a leg up on it, I think, anyway. Is there anything else to come before this board this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn and is not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Simple yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night, Wareham, thank you very much, we are adjourned at eight oh eight.
Have a nice vacation, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, thank you.